I'll call the meetings to order. I would like to ask, fitting me, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Please keep the Ginder family and the Gillen family in our box. If I could simply stand for the privacy.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the St. Louisburg and Trents, the Record, The Messenger, Westmofford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, K-division of Warwick, and Westmofford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please. Mrs. Ricano?
Here.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Here.
Mr. Lippie?
Here.
Mrs. Flyer?
Here.
Mr. Reo?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Swatko?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
All right, good morning, members of the community. We have our final, last step of the 2023-24 budget cycle tonight, with the public here on the budget. Through our Board of Education, our volunteer Board of Education, both time, and going to be an hour day commander over the past few months. I always tell people, what you see at the board meeting is the tip of the iceberg. There's a whole lot more I can do. So thank you, Board of trustees. But this budget has not changed a lot since we were here in March as the preliminary budget. We called it a typically responsive budget because it responds to a lot of outside factors. It's kind of got over time again. This is just for...
Dr. Irwin, can you hold the microphone?
Sure. Thank you. Ryan, back.
Can everyone else's microphone not over red?
All right. So can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Anything back? Okay. So this is just for escalating costs in contracted transportation, which is something that we deal with, which has done up a lot over the past probably year and a half. Health insurance costs are rising dramatically, energy costs on top of everything else that we do, where everything we do next year costs more than it did this year. So the town budget is going to increase by two and a half percent, the general fund just a little bit more, 2.58 percent. We've mentioned this before, and I'll mention it again, this is year six of the seven-year phase in of the new state funding formula that we call S2. The cumulative state reduction is over $9 million now. I anticipate it to be over $10 million when you're here 12 months from now. So it makes funding everything very difficult because our revenues are declining. So our curriculum highlights, there's no practice, give us a grade, this really hasn't changed much since March either, but there was a lot of people not here, so.
I'm fortunate I get to talk about some of the fun parts of the budget. We are continuing to enhance our enrollment courses. We have a number of courses in our program of study that are pending based on enrollment. We've added programs like our aviation course and our EMT, which I believe are being scheduled for in one for next school year, which is exciting. We didn't know when you offer a course like this, if you're going to have interest, so that's been a positive. One of the programs that has been really successful this year is the training with Nancy Schultz in conquer math at the Pronic. We started this last year, where we wanted to do a K through 12 initiative to work with our staff, work with our mathematics staff for best practices and standards-based instruction. They've been really, you know, the collaboration between Nancy Schultz and our staff has just been tremendous. We're continuing with that path. We have a number of grade levels who will be completing that training this year. We have probably 75% more of that who started this year, being year one, and they'll have their second year next year. And we do have a small group of courses and grade levels who will be starting that process for the first time next year. So it's typically about a four or five-year process to complete the school district, and that's one of the exciting things we have. We've really looked to support our robotics program. We added a 3D printer, we added a PC to work with the 3D printer. I've also been in discussions with our elementary schools to, you know, a number of years ago, we supported clubs, robotics clubs at the elementary level. This time, a lot of those materials are dated and need a replenishment, so we're going to be looking to update and replace some of those items. Two of the most exciting that I'd like to talk about tonight are funded through our access to stabilization funds. Barbara's explained many times, stabilization funds are, you know, for one-time purchases and big-ticket items that you wouldn't typically be able to do one year in the budgeting process. The first one is the replacement of our K5 math program. We are near the end stages of selecting the program. Our staff has narrowed it down to three, and we're, you know, going to the districts and taking visits in other schools and, you know, seeing which program fits our needs the best. A more recent development is the discussion with our district literacy committee in regard to potential replacement of our language arts program, K5, not for next year, but potentially for the '24-'25 school year. So we started that process. We've been looking to build upon the success of our phonics program in K through 2. Part of next year's budget is going to include training for staff members who have changed grade levels over the years and have not had that additional training for our successful phonics program. That is included in next year's budget, and, you know, training, follow-up training for staff members who were trained many, you know, many years ago, refresh training is something that they call it. So we're really looking for big changes in our K5 mathematics and the LA program. Knowing Science, it's a program that began a number of years ago. We have finished the process of bringing in all of those new materials. It was a three-year, it was a three-year process. We are now in possession of all the units that we have for that program, and now we're in the replenishment cycle. So next year's school budget, we've included something called the Common Items Kit, which would be like thermometers, solar panels, you know, to power solar-powered car, baking soda, popsicle steaks, all those types of things that our staff need to keep these units a steady going, you know, throughout the course of the year. And then last but not least, we actually completed the first step of our transition to putting our intervention and referral services onto our student information system, which you call real-time. All of our plans are now up to date and are on the system, and the next step of that is building, building our student intervention plans using our, using our system, which has been a goal of ours this year, and we're at the step of taking that to the next level. That's my...
So our budget basics, we split our budget on revenues and expenses. The problem is, one is going up and one is going down. So our revenues decline across the board, obviously except for our local tax levy, which is set by the Board of Education. The tax levy is capped at 2% plus allowable adjustments, which we are putting into the budget, recommending to be in the budget for next year. Our state aid has declined by just under 1.2 million, however, hold on to that number for a couple slides ahead. Our fund balance is declining this year, and will most likely decline again 12 months from now when we do the '24-'25 budget. Our expenses, on the other hand, are going up. Salaries, benefits, transportation, everything we do costs more year over year. Different budget lines go up by a different amount. Salaries may go up 2.7%, but health benefits could go up 22%. Contracted transportation could go up 45%. So as a whole, a lot of different increases that we deal with to get the budget wrangled. This is our state aid reductions cumulative over the last six years, and as you can see here, our left is blank for next year, will most likely be over $10 million. As a percentage of our budget, the state used to cover about a quarter of our budget. This is where we are now, about 7.5%. I anticipate it going down to very close to 5% for next year. So one in $4 here, one in about $20 next year. However, that $1.2 million reduction in state aid, since the preliminary budget, there was a new law passed that allowed districts to apply for additional state aid for 2/3 of the amount reduced. So we submitted that application, it was approved at the last board meeting, that's just under $800,000, so that money, so the state aid reduction is basically 1.2 million minus 800,000, so you just back that out. We believe this is a one-time revenue source. I would not recommend using it to support ongoing annual costs with your typical personnel. You can use that money, it might be more proof to use that money to support one-time-only ish, one-time-only items in your budget, because the one-time-only item you purchase now, you don't need to purchase it next year, and this revenue is unlikely to be there 12 months from now. Health insurance costs, this chart changed a little bit, but this just gives you an idea of how much we're spending on our staff's health insurance costs. There was a new law that went into place a couple years ago, which really limited the employee contribution. So this is what we receive from our employees in terms of contributions. It's very flat, and these are our health insurance costs, so it's a much steeper increase. So a higher percentage of the health insurance costs is absorbed by the district due to this new law. So our local tax levy, remember, it's not on the total budget, it's just on the taxes. So it's 2% plus allowable adjustments, which we have in there. So the total is just under 4.5%. At Westmofford, we have about $4 out of $5 come from local taxes, so we're getting about 2% of 80%, not 2% of 100%. So that local tax levy is about what we normally get from, well, it's just over $1 million, so you know what our state is being reduced. Due to some large increases in health insurance, we are eligible for a tax levy increase, which brings the final budget tax levy increase to be just under 4.5%, 4.48%, which is much higher than we've had the previous couple of years, but we just feel it's not sustainable to keep us at the low number, so. The 12-year average is still low, still below 2%, but it is increasing. However, this number will most likely drop again next year because the allowable adjustments may not be there. So preliminary budget for next year, local taxes going up 4.48%, the general fund increases by 2.5%. This is where we, this is the revenues we're getting in, and you can see the state aid here that was reduced. This does not include the stabilization aid that we just applied for.
Alex, can you take a step to your right, so...
Sorry, and our revenues, this is how we're spending our money. As you know, the money in has to equal the money out, and the money out has to equal the money in, I suppose. So everything has to balance, this is a balanced budget. A little bit higher tax levy increase than we're accustomed to in this community, but we feel there are a lot of reductions in the budget already, and further reductions to the tax levy may compromise that. Speaking of taxes, the average increase on school taxes, this is the median home, is $235,000 per year, just under $20 per month. That's the median home. If you have a home that's assessed at more than that, your tax increase will be more. If you have a house assessed lower than that number, your tax increase will be less than that. And we do have capital projects included in that budget, and again, these are typically one-time-only costs, so you really shouldn't be worried. Of course, we have the bleachers that cut out fields, we have some projects in Macbin and UGL. Do have original windows at UGL that are over 50 years old now, single-pane glass, very energy inefficient, same with some of our older doors. So we feel as though investing money into the envelope of our buildings is always a big, is always a wise, a good return on investment. Proposed reductions, they are also on the agenda for tonight. They're across all different categories, from administration to teachers, elementary, middle, high school, transportation custodian, and then general cuts to clubs, supplies, athletics, professional development, et cetera. So we spread these cuts out as balanced as we could across the board, so pretty much every group, pretty much every school, pretty much every level is affected by these reductions. Anybody on the board have any questions?
I do. Have, have you looked at, I see cuts throughout the district for staff and faculty. Have you looked at any possible cuts for central office?
Central office, we've had cuts, so what we try to do here is, whatever was cut last year, we try not to cut again, and we try to balance it out. So mostly, to cut through the same group year after year is just, comes very difficult. So we've had a few cuts there the past few years. This year, there are no cuts in central office. The previous few years, there have been some, and looking to the future, there might be additional, but there are none in this budget.
If I could add to that, Mrs. Flyer, it's a little difficult since our responsibilities are all based upon the number of students at the schools. Our responsibilities are based upon the compliance that we have to do required by the state of New Jersey. Over the last few years, we have lost staff members, and if you recall, I guess it was two budget cycles ago, we actually took two secretary positions and combined them, and put that, we took one from high school and one from central office, combined the two positions to create one, and that person is currently in central office. I have to say that we've, and you've heard me mention this through the years, we've had a hard time cross-training people because we just don't have enough time to be able to get that done, because as additional workload comes up from the state of New Jersey, we've been adding it to the individuals that are more, most aligned with the type of requirements that we have to provide. For us to eliminate a position and disperse that work among the remaining staff could be very problematic. You saw two budget, two meetings ago, the auditors came in and spoke about our annual audit, and the fact that we had no comments on the audit. That's not by accident, it's because the people there are well-trained, and they've been very diligent about working with the schools to make sure that they are compliant with the requirements that the auditors are going to be looking for.
Thank you.
So Barbara, maybe you can help yourself, the public understand. Back, Alex, it said back on slide eight, 2008, 2009, you received 25% of our budget rate from the state, and now we're down to like 7.5%. And then on slide 12, it says 80% of our revenues come from local tax levy. So if the chart says 7.5%, the other 12.5%, can you explain, is that like the debt service? And like, where does that money come? So, I'm just trying to do math. 80% is the tax levy. We're only getting 7.5% from the state, and the other 80% is coming from...
We have, we have reserve accounts that...
That's what I'm asking. So I thought you...
We have reserve accounts that have the capital projects that we were having, that we have done, the money is being taken, the bulk of the money is being taken from our capital reserve account. We also have a maintenance reserve account, and we use part of that money every year to offset our maintenance costs. So our maintenance costs are in our general fund, and because we have our own carpenter, plumber, electrician, and we do a lot of the repair work rather than having to go out and hire the companies that are going to do work for us on a regular wage, it's a cost savings for the district to have their own skilled people there, so...
Part of that is also that $788,000 rate that we're getting?
No, no. That $788,000 is a totally separate bucket of money.
That's what I'm saying, that's factored in.
But yeah, that, I guess, that could be a little bit higher.
It's not factored in our current budget. The budget that you're being presented tonight, that $788,000 of supplemental aid is a totally separate bucket of money. It's a totally separate bank account. So you have to think, I think it might be easier to think in terms of bank accounts. Your, your general fund is your checking account, and your maintenance reserve and your capital reserve are your savings account. So you can add money to those accounts, and you can build those accounts up for those times that you need it. The supplemental aid that you were fortunate enough to get will be, if we don't use it, then that could either be then appropriated into one of your maintenance accounts, or you can drop that into fund balance, so that you can use that to support a future project.
Doesn't have to be used this year.
It does not have to be used. However, you know, we had to earmark areas that could be, that it could cover when we applied for it, and the areas that we earmarked were one-time expenses that were not included in the 23-24 budget, but would be beneficial to have, such as repeaters for transportation, because we're having a problem communicating with the buses, with our radios, and the radios themselves are getting old. So even though we have equipment, that equipment needs to be replaced, and if you're buying it all at the same time so that everybody has the same thing, then you have to replace it all at the same time, and that becomes balancing out. Any other questions on board?
Next portion of the meeting is for public comment. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement containing the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Ms. Francisco, does anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, our first person is Lee Moore.
Oh, is the red light?
Good evening. I was one of the students who spoke here last week regarding the budget cuts on the Italian program. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the board for listening to the students and parents that spoke last week. I am excited to be given the opportunity to finish out my Italian curriculum at the Westmofford High School. It is very encouraging to see that the students can make a difference. I am also saddened to know that many dedicated teachers are losing their jobs due to the budget cuts. I hope the district finds ways to avoid this in the future. Every cut is an opportunity taken away from the students. Why should parents be enrolling their children into the Westmofford School District if these students aren't getting the same opportunities as other schools in the state? These teachers have dedicated their time into the district and into creating a powerful environment for their students. Many of my past elementary school teachers are here tonight, and I have so much gratitude for how much they have impacted my life. The proposal to increase elementary school classes is very concerning. How can the teachers do their job and the students receive the proper education? I hope the Board of Education reconsiders this proposal. I hope that students continue to have an impact in our district, as I will continue to advocate what is best for the students and the teachers. Thank you, and good night.
Just sign that, thank you. And you don't have to write your address, you can just write your name because you're a student, that's okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Murstoff, resident at 34 Center Street. It's 9:15 PM. I'm typing this letter for open public comment. We might show them our sleep upstairs. I should be also asleep upstairs. Many people have told me, enjoy them while they're young. Little kids, little problems. Big kids, big problems. Yet, I feel like I'm already facing big problems. That big problem is their education, their futures. Instead, I am here, at my computer, pleading with the Board of Ed to reconsider all the cuts they are proposing due to declining enrollment, efficiency, and the current economy. Yes, insurance premiums are rising. Yes, the cost of diesel is rising. But haven't we technically become more efficient now that we are operating one less elementary school? I trusted you, I cried with you, pleading with you for nine months, and I'm exhausted. Aren't you tired of always having to chop everyone down and everything down? This reactive approach must stop now. I pray that our incoming superintendent comes with fresh ideas and an open mind, and the experience needed to deal with our district's problems. We need some new blood, new ideas. We need grant money. If you take, 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 you will have nothing left to give, and soon your residents will see that and move elsewhere or send their children to PCTI. As you have told us many times before, if there's less student enrollment, we will get even less state aid. See vicious angle. How are we here again, and so quickly after closing the school and being awarded $1.3 million in stabilization aid? What about the school funding bill that Governor Murphy rushed to put into effect for next year, when we had been allocated that additional $788,000? Thank you for explaining that, I appreciate it. But other districts like Vernon have received this leftover COVID funding, not once, but twice. I heard we missed the vote on that. We need to take swift action to start this grant writing program, or hire someone externally as quickly as humanly possible, as many towns like us are trying to find funding for their public schools too. We are one out of 160 districts that are benefiting from the school funding bill, but why aren't we actually benefiting? Positions that are going to be eliminated, as you mentioned, multiple teaching positions, including English and math in middle and high school levels, guidance counselors, encore team, child study team, media specialists, nursing staff, and special education teachers. When is it enough? My thought process is that these positions were created for a reason. They have a purpose, they have a need. Yes, if enrollment decreases and there is one less elementary school, positions have to be eliminated. But aren't class sizes going to increase even if it's only slightly? How is it possible that we need this much less staff? How is it possible to even consider reducing the amount of middle school guidance counselors? That's when students need it most, during those emotionally charged years. My husband and I moved here for a reason, like... Like so many other residents that I've told you before, there are so many wonderful things about our town. Our education system, though, taking a nosedive. We are rated four out of 10 at best. I know I'm stating the obvious. Our average math proficiency score is significantly less than the state average. If you continue to cut staff, cut programs, you are taking away their opportunity to succeed. If you take away a language, you are eliminating their opportunity to take an AP class and get into a better college. You take all that away, and we are still facing financial turmoil. Something needs to change. Someone needs to go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alice DeMont. I live at 3072, and I'm a freshman at the West Milford High School. I've been listening closely to what's happening to the district and why they're competing classes in high school. Even though it looks like the business classes are no longer a proposed cut, I'd like to share my thoughts. Last month in period, I took the business class, fashion merchandising. And this month in period, I'm in hospitality and tours. At the last boarding meeting, board meeting, sorry, I was informed that the business classes would be cut this year, but we're not continuing the next couple of years. Tonight, I want to tell you why I think the business classes are just cut. We need business classes. Business is done everywhere, and it's been happening from. So we do so need to learn how to do it. The business classes that the high school offers are accounting for business, personal finance, hospitality and tourism, fashion merchandising, marketing, entrepreneurship, and small business management, and sports entertainment. These classes are all requirements to graduate. So if the district cuts it, what do the students do? As a district manager? The classes are important, not only for credits, but they also show like skills. Accounting for business gives the students a perspective for making wise financial decisions. Entrepreneurship and small business management introduces rewards and risks that will mean a small business. It helps students organize, manage, and plan a business. Personal finance is managing your own money and making wise decisions. And taxes, banking, credit and debt cards, insurance, etc. Hospitality and tourism gives students an overview of lodging, food and beverage, recreation, attractions, travel, and tourism. In this class, the students learn about behavioral skills, operations, and consumer reading, navigation. Fashion merchandising gives students a history of evolution in the business of fashion from the 19th century to present day. Marketing gives a basic introduction to the price of the environment. It shows advertising, promotion, and market research. It shows students making ethical decisions in business. Finally, sports and entertainment marketing is a unique course that shows the fundamental of practical appliances and marketing in sports, entertainment industry. As you can see, we need these classes to prepare us for the real world. Like I said last month in period, I took the business class, fashion merchandising. And this month in period, I'm in hospitality and tourism. I was informed that this class was being cut, and I knew that I would have to have a chance to do something about it. Business is done everywhere, and it has been happening forever. The business classes that the high school offers should stay in the high school so that incoming students and the students offering into high school can be ready when they're doing business in the future, which is coming up very soon. Mrs. Claus is the business teacher here at the West Milford High School and is a maintenance. I would hate to see her lose her job because she makes learning fun and gets a job job. This is why I believe business classes should not be cut.
Is there someone else that would like to speak?
Seeing not like the public comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is the gender ready to be adopted? I need someone to adopt the gender.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the candidate presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Greenow, operations and finance?
I would like to move item number one to operations and finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Carrie?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make a statement. Seven, seven years ago, when I was the first elected to the West Milford Board of Education, I vowed to build and preserve an academic environment that's so necessary for a successful school district. As I review this budget, I am disheartened by the failure of this administration to create such a balanced learning arena for our children. First, there's the decision of restructuring Westbrook School and redistricting our children. The lead administrators, who have been extremely instrumental in creating this plan, are leaving our district while not seeing the plan through to its fruition. The redistricting, I'm sorry. The redistricting in concert with the decision has been inequitable, and I feel unfair. The savings, meanwhile, are minimal. Secondly, the administration has failed to seriously consider class size at the high school and their decision to eliminate staff. Allowing elective classes to continue with enrollments of less than 12 students is a problem for me. At least two of these programs can be run as after-school clubs as they have been done in the past. Our math scores are not competitive with the other districts, and our ELA scores are falling. We cannot blame COVID as other districts also experience the COVID problem. One-to-one phone books are only a tool. This administration has neglected the support that our middle school and high school media specialists provide every day for our children and these tools. In the forever quest to increase AP courses we offer and the number of students that participate in these challenging classes, how dare we not provide the research capability to succeed in these areas? We have invested an enormous amount of money with Shelley Klein and the Columbia Teachers College, and now we have dropped the ball and are not reinforcing reading in grades six through 12, something that media specialists do in a number of ways. And for these reasons, I am not supporting this budget.
I'll be voting in favor of this budget that increases the general property tax levy by four and a half percent. Yes, the same trustee that voted for the second of the 0% general tax levy increases in the 2017 to 18 school year. I didn't regret that choice then, just as I won't regret this choice now. To support this budget, I wanted to justify this vote by understanding how we even got to this point and what we should do next. Because in my heart and mind, this is the most critical juncture in not only our district's future, but our township's future. I love West Milford, and I'm not alone in that sentiment. From the census of 1920, West Milford grew and grew until we reached our high-water residency in the 2000 census of 26,410 residents. And by April of 2004, the 2004 to 2005 school budget was prepared for a student body of 4,270 students, the district's high-water mark. Shortly thereafter, in August of 2004, Governor McRevy signed the Highlands Water Protection and Planning Act, which severely limited the residential and commercial development of Highlands-protected townships. This new legislation gave West Milford the unique distinction of being 100% within this protected region. From 2004 onward, our township's population and our district's enrollment began to decline. In 2005, the first of seven superintendents in an 11-year period would retire in a seventh year of administering a growing school district. And by 2008, a second superintendent would retire. In July of 2008, the School Funding Reform Act was signed into law by Governor Corzine. We sit here today upset that this legislation went into effect, but I'm not. We have school districts in our state that are truly underfunded, and our school district needs to confront the extensive loss of student enrollment. 2008 also welcomed an unwelcoming trend of short-tenured superintendents, with two of the next five superintendents being interim per deemed superintendents. In 2008, the district's third superintendent arrived. I consider the years that followed the revolving door years. The 2008 to 2009 school budget was met with the incredible challenge of the 2008 financial crisis. And by September 29, 2008, the Dow fell over 777 points. The ensuing recession had a deep impact on our country, our state, and township. One impact was the delayed implementation of the School Funding Reform Act. In June 2010, Governor Christie signed the state legislation that reined in the state's high property taxes by reducing the property tax levy cap from 4% to 2%, and allowed for increases to be bent for three succeeding years. In 2010, the door revolved for a fourth time, with an interim superintendent that lasted two years. This superintendent had a 2010 to 11 school enrollment of 3,975 students, a decrease of 745 students from the high-water mark. The census year 2010 also noted a township population decline of 560 residents. Our township challenges were taken toll, and the town's commercial and residential vacancy rates continued to grow. There was a bright note that year. 2010 also sparked the district getting a new business administrator, Barbara Francisco. Little did she know at the time, she would be a cornerstone of continuity for a district with changing superintendents and growing challenges. The Board of 2010 discussed the idea of closing a school. In order to gather the appropriate facts, Ross Haber and Associates was hired to perform a demographic and redistricting study for the district. Despite declining enrollment being concluded, no school was recommended for closure at the time. In the year 2012, the township and district underwent additional changes and challenges. The Township Council of 2011 determined that a revaluation of the municipality's properties was needed after the last revaluation was conducted in 1988. The resulting valuations began in January of 2012 and saw the property taxes of some homes doubling. In the course of the fifth year, or in the course of that year, a fifth superintendent was hired by the district. In the same year, stability was brought to our school district and other districts in our state when legislation was passed that allowed for school boards to change their election dates from April to November. In October of 2012, the West Milford School Board resolved to change its election. The most important part of this legislation was that school budgets no longer needed public approval. The 2013 to 14 school year continued the trend of declining enrollment with 3,627 students, a 1,093-student decline from the 2004 to 2005 peak. By the 2014 to 15 school year, the fifth superintendent, an interim superintendent, took the reins of the district whose enrollment declined an additional 62 students, or 1,155 students from our district's height. 2015 to 16 dropped an additional 93 students, and then in 2016 to 17, 97 more students were lost. Not only were the demographic projections of 2010 being met, they were unfortunately being exceeded. By the 2016 to 17 school year, the district finally saw stability in its seventh superintendent, Dr. Animal. His ensuing tenure allowed for a consistent vision that could finally be laid out. For his first school year, the controversial 0% tax increase was previously approved by the Board of 2016. I will absolutely admit that 0% increases could and often do have negative long-term consequences. Due to the relatively stable inflation at the time, this 0% increase had the effect of a 2% decrease. Budget freezes can result in capital projects and required maintenance to be deferred. Reserve and fund accounts may end up being depleted or fall short of their purpose of undertaking future projects. However, tax increases have the opposite exponential effect of a 0% tax, where a 2% increase the following year is on top of a larger baseline tax levy. In hindsight, the 2016 Board had great reasons for aiming at this objective. The Highlands Act essentially froze our tax base. This tax base continued to have a significant vacancy rate. The school district needed to confront a restructuring due to the decreased enrollment of 1,345 students from its group, and the budget's personnel salaries were unsustainable for the district's financial future. Through hard work and a strong exchange of ideas, the 0% tax increase was unanimously accomplished. This 0% increase maintained small class sizes, community schools, and the academic objectives of the district. Unfortunately, this was mainly accomplished through a small number of retirements, which allowed us to eliminate some positions, one-time expenditure cuts, and other cuts that would prove to be inadequate in the forthcoming years. The 2017 Board once again committed itself to a 0% increase for the 2017 to 18 school year. This was unheard of in the state, and some cried that this decision was not prudent thinking. I begged to differ then, as I do now. Not only did we accomplish this for the respect of our tax base, we focused on maintaining our curriculum. We completed an unbelievable amount of long-range capital projects, some of which were financed at record-low interest rates with the district receiving state reimbursement. Our capital reserve and maintenance reserve accounts were still being funded, and our fund balance, basically our working capital, was reported by our auditors as being healthy. As 2017 progressed, the thought of closing a school was quietly discussed. This, excuse me. The discussion was tempered after the township officially ended its lease to the Hillcrest School Building, and by parroting vehemently that closing a school was unnecessary. The specter of an empty building still haunts any idea The specter of an empty building still haunts any idea of physically closing an elementary school. The 2017 to 18 school year further declined to 3,307 students enrolled in the district. The 2018 to 19 budget discussions introduced and passed a modest tax increase. By the end of the 17 to 18 school year, the district was able to transfer $500,000 into capital reserve. Everything changed once Governor Murphy signed Senate Bill 2, aka S2, in July of 2018. For a decade, the School Funding Reform Act of 2008 was never fully implemented after its first and only fully funded school year of 2008 to 2009. The governor and the legislature committed to its full implementation. The result for West Milford was its first major state aid reduction of $415,361. The Board had to reapprove their 2018 to 19 budget that was passed in April to account for this reduction. The gravity of these state aid cuts were felt in the preparation of the 2019 to 20 school budget. This budget affected an enrollment of 3,154 students, which was 1,566 students less than our district's peak. Additionally, the next round of the S2 cuts called for a $950,066 reduction in state aid. The 2019 to 20 budget introduced a 2.75% increase to the tax levy by utilizing bank cap. If you recall, the 2% per year increase can be carried forward within a three-year period if the full 2% isn't utilized. So portion of the 2017 to 18 0% increase was mostly captured back. It was at this point that the vision of a consistent superintendent and a willing board chose to confront certain realities. In June of 2019, Ross Haber Associates completed an enrollment projection and demographic study to understand the continued decline in student enrollment. In 2010, it was advised that the district not close an elementary school. In this study, it was advised that the district undergo utilization study to understand the impacts of closing an elementary school. In December of 2019, the Board began a restructure that started with its approval of the Mackey School Reconfiguration for the 2020-2021 school year that introduced sixth graders to the middle school. Then, the school year of 2019 to 20 began like most other school years until March of 2020. I don't want to rehash the calendar year of 2020. The policies of this time wildly varied from state to state and from town to town, but one indisputable fact was that our students were negatively impacted. The only saving grace arrived for the school district's finances that pushed back the inevitability based by this budget tonight. Shortly after the pandemic began, the government printing press went to work and sent a massive amount of money to states and localities in the form of emergency relief omnibus spending legislation. In March 2020, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security, the CARES Act, established the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, ESR, with subsequent legislation following. As a result of this monetary windfall and the lack of necessity to operate the physical infrastructure of our district, the district was able to transfer $750,000 into capital reserve, $500,000 into maintenance reserve, and maintain an adequate fund balance. The challenges of 2020 made it easy to forget the other realities our town and district were facing. The 2020 census reported an additional population decrease of 988 residents. The 2020 to 2021 school year will be implemented for 3,095 students, which was a 1,625 student decrease from the district peak, and the state announced a further $1,972,723 state aid reduction for the 2020 to 2021 school year. Despite this bad news, by June of 2020, the COVID relief measures sustained our budget decrease and also allowed for a $1,050,000 transfer into our capital reserve, and legislation allowed for a larger carryover into our fund balance. The year 2020 to 2021 began unlike any other school year and was further complicated by the record inflation that began in January of 2021, the announcement of $2,415,202 of state aid reduction for the school year, and continued enrollment decline. Though the news was not good, the additional COVID relief measures still provided enough cash flow to the district and ultimately allowed for a $500,000 capital reserve transfer, a $300,000 maintenance reserve transfer, and an adequate fund balance. By May of 2022, a budget was approved for an enrollment of 2,968 students, a decline of 1,752 students from our district's peak, and the inclusion of an additional $2,92,145 in state aid reduction. Shortly after this budget's approval, the administration and the Board announced their intention of further restructuring the district. The superintendent and the Board formed several committees that included our district professionals and the public at large to seek counsel towards a completely different direction for our district in order to manage this budget's cuts. In July of 2022, more bad news came when the New Jersey State Health Benefits Commission announced a 20-plus percent rate increase for its members in 2023. Thankfully, we weren't shackled to this plan, but we still suffered dramatic increases of our own, and recently, the district absorbed the heavier burden in its contractual obligations. The summer turned to spring, the spring to fall, and then in December, Westbrook School was approved for repurposing beginning in the 2023-2024 school year. Tonight's budget, those effects are yet to be felt, and I don't think it's going to be enough of a measure. In the face of the challenges that Hillcrest still prevents us, I strongly believe that we will need to seriously discuss the utilization of our schools once again in order to study the effects of physically closing an additional elementary school. And even though there is a slight possibility of mandatory pre-K being instituted in our state, there's a reality that we need to face in this budget. All the history that came before this moment culminates in this moment. This budget represents a projected enrollment of 2,899 students, a projected decline of 1,821 students from our district peak, and an additional $1,194,106 decrease in state aid. The 2008 to 2009 budget was supported by over 25% in state aid. For the 2024-2025 budget, a little more than 5% will be supported by state aid. We will have one final state aid cut that's anticipated to be a little less than $1 million in order to implement not only a Senate Bill 2 acceleration, but which fully implements the Student Funding Reform Act of 2008 for only the second time since it was signed almost 15 years ago. And as a result, we will have a major structural deficit going into the 2024-25 budget, and once again, we are projected to continue the trend of declining student enrollment. I want to see a school district that promotes a safer and more secure learning environment with additional vestibules like the one built in Westbrook and Mackey. I want to see increased offerings for our students with more professionals that can guide each and every one of their academic needs. I want to see a district that can afford increased professional development, reduced class sizes, additional social, emotional support systems, and on and on. But that all takes really difficult and gut-wrenching decisions in order to accomplish it. It's been argued that we had a mini baby boom after the pandemic. I can almost assure you that our population growth will not grow its way out of our challenges. As much of a resource as a grant writer would be, hiring one would require that we let go of more employees, and to require our limited administration to apply for additional labor-intensive grants on top of the ones they already applied for would be unfair to them. We have no choice but to make our next decision standing on the pillars of our constitutional mandate for a thorough and efficient education. We must advocate for our students, and sometimes the only way about that is through difficult growing pains. Of our $74,545,415 budget, $42,385,014 is anticipated spending on salaries, or rather, 56.9% of our total budget. With the remaining 43.1% of our funding, a substantial amount is dedicated to other fixed costs, which leaves limited opportunities for the decisions ahead. However, if 2020 taught us one thing, our schoolchildren are more resilient than they get credit for. It's time to move forward. The effects of this budget will fall on a new superintendent. As history has dictated, the students of West Milford and the taxpayers of West Milford are best served by the stability of a consistent and dedicated superintendent whose core focuses are student advocacy, community engagement, and strategic planning. I have no question in my mind of who should fill that position. I'd like to make one thing clear. Being in favor of this budget does not equate to being happy with this budget. No one is happy with this budget, but I support this budget because I believe this moment represents a turning point that will eventually result in a more thorough and more efficient school district whose best days are ahead. This budget that we are voting on at this moment may be the most important vote in the local township's history. By voting yes tonight, I believe we will make our first step in saving our district with all deliberate speed. To my colleagues, I ask for your support as well so we can move forward together. Thank you.
Any other comments, Greg?
I'm sorry. Because I felt like that, I'm sorry, I'm out of order. But that was a very long statement when we're in the agenda. I understand he had a statement about the...
Okay, do you have any comments or questions on the number one under Operations of Management?
I have no comments.
Go ahead, Greg.
How many staff members do we have? How many staff members do we have?
Subs or anything like that?
Certified and support staff?
Full-time and part-time.
I would say it covers around 500.
Because, I mean, listen, it makes sense that 57% of the budget is wages.
That's really consistent with other school districts.
I would say that most, 75%, 80% is salary benefits.
And just through this coming year, how much are we giving to St. County Technical Institute for each student that goes there?
They actually consider tuition for their students this year.
By $11,000 or?
It was over $11,000, now it's $10,054.
It was $250?
A tuition for PCTI is $1,140,720.
I mean, because I think... Say that one more time, $1 million what?
Which is about what a 2% tax increase would be.
Yes, so I think you knew what I was getting at, right? So, and again, I think it's a wonderful school, but I think for all of us taxpayers, we pay county taxes that go to St. County Technical Institute, right? In West Milford. And I have friends that have students or children at St. County Tech, but I do feel like that's a little bit of a double dip, right? And I know we've tried to do things and, yeah, it seems like it falls on deaf ears.
We've passed resolutions in the past, and we can do so again if we want. Funding formula for county technical schools is different in every county. There should be a standard formula across the state. So in Bergen County, just right next door, the county commissioners, the county essentially supports about half the budget, and the local school districts, and the aggregates support 50% too. In St. County, the commissioners support, I believe, like 10%, and the local school districts support 90%. So it's very tough, it's much more difficult on St. County school districts than it is just in Bergen County and...
And Morris County?
I don't have any in Morris County now. Morris County offers a half-day program, which allows students to go to their home school for a half-day and then the county school for a half-day to the sports, but they need the school, it's totally, so it's a little bit more flexibility, but we don't get that from St. County.
Again, so, right, so I know I'm, this is my part of the school board, I am frustrated as a taxpayer. Frustrated as a taxpayer, that this happens year after year. To West, not just West Milford, West Milford and Greenwood and Wanacue and Haskell and Mandale, all the lakes, and we continue to provide 90% to St. County Tech, along with all the money that the state continues to provide, to create a campus that is, I would say probably one of the premier, if not the premier, county technical institutes in the entire state, right?
First name is 17 million, is that for real? That's what they got?
I don't know, that's what I heard, I don't know.
It's more than twice the size of the second largest county, so they're also not just funded differently, it's also more students. Just out of, if you look at the sizes of Morris County, Sussex, Bergen, Union, Essex, they're all right around here, and then more than double than the second largest is St. County, so seems out of whack, it's an outlay for sure. So you're right, it is frustrating, and, you know, as a taxpayer and as a school board member.
It is out of whack, and personally, I never thought I'd say this, but I know someone very well who's the VA, their accountant, of a technical school, not in our county, not near one. However, they said, "It's almost crazy, we don't even know what to spend all our money on." So in our state, the technical high school, their VA is saying, "We just can't decide what to upgrade next." So they're feeling the total opposite of what we're feeling. And the fight here is really, we shouldn't be fighting here. We need to fight together and get to that PCTI meeting. We've said it many times, but that meeting, I think, is at 9:00 a.m. You know, I'm a volunteer here and I have a job, and most of you have jobs, so I can't go to the PCTI board meeting.
That's why they make it at 9:00.
I think you can have it at 9:00 a.m., right? Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's okay. And so, the one thing I just want to bring to the long lines of this discussion is that that's why our commissioners say, "Well, we've kept our budget flat for all these years," and that they're very proud of keeping the county taxes low, is because they're only keeping that percentage across the board, and then they're making each individual townships pony up the difference. And so it ends up, again, being shouldered on the families and the taxpayers here at West Milford Township, and it is just totally, it's totally wrong. And yes, I've heard many stories about they have so much, each teacher has money, they don't know what to spend, and I keep saying, "Well, send it back to West Milford."
So we'll go back to something that Terry said a little bit earlier with regard to class sizes, and I know I sound like a broken record, and I've said this for years, with regard to each honors classes and AP classes. And sometimes you might have four or five students in an honors class and another four or five students, or eight students in seven students in an honors and AP class. Don't know why some of those cannot be combined. I just think that they're learning the same thing. I get it, some students choose not to take an AP class.
I mean, I believe this board, the majority of the people on this board have requested multiple times that the honors track not be a track, maybe AP, and they need combined. We have said that, I've been on this board this is my fifth year, I've heard that every single year.
You said you got to be something that...
There'll be fewer teachers, so you'll have to combine some courses as a result of those different reductions, which is how to, the fewer teachers around, so you have to provide some courses. You may not have, you may not be able to run certain courses, but you may have to combine other courses.
Because when you look at the... I know that you get a broad, you know, differences in certain classes, but some of them...
The high school schedule is done, isn't it, right?
Do we have, you know, that you can tell us that are combined for what?
There are some that are combined.
We have asked for it for years, I usually... Because the argument is that even if you're in an honors court, in an AP course as an honors student, no one tells you you have to take the tests, but they're still like learning the same material side by side, and it seems like we're wasting our dollars. I just want to get back on something with the PCTI too. We are not criticizing PCTI as a school, they're an excellent educational school. We are feeling the impact financially because of it, and it isn't just a county problem, it's a state problem, because our state wants to regionalize schools, and that they are doing it through tax dollars. And whether we fight or not, that's their end goal. And unfortunately, for St. County, because of the makeup of the communities in St. County, that's why we're landing where we are with what's happening here. It's an excellent school, there's great, a lot of our kids do very well from there. I think one of the problems are, we have, Demi and I have sat through meetings at county level to try to address that, because the percentage that the county gives, covers for PCTI has not changed in over 15 years. Imagine you with your budget never having to change it. As a taxpayer, I'm paying twice, but I would much rather see them increase it at the county level than, so that everybody feels their fair share.
Three times, because our state tax dollars...
Right, you're right, yes. But I'm saying, I think it's not really, it's not PCTI's fault, it's yours to do. And we've heard this for years, I can remember going to workshop for years, Terry and I have sat at tables with school districts who were on the other side of the funding picture, and they would say, "Oh, well, we're putting in a new stadium," and we're sitting here, we're trying to figure out how we're going to keep our teachers. So it is, it's an unfair funding pattern, and it's not going to ever be fair for West Milford because of where we are and how it is, you know, it's just the way it breaks down, but we should be fighting, but the school board can't fight it alone. We need taxpayers to fight it, because we've sat in meeting after meeting, written letters, done reservations with the...
And legislating, writing letters.
Everything we could possibly...
We're voting on the fact that...
Well, I'm on, I'm piggybacking on the conversation, just like maybe, I took an extra 10 minutes, I'm sorry.
Any other comments? Senior, it's an annual call.
Mr. Grino.
Yes.
Mrs. Shakana.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
No.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mrs. Overly.
Yes.
Mr. Lippy.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
I'd like to make a motion to move item number two under Operations of Management.
Second. Any questions at the time? Senior, it's an annual call, please.
Mr. Grino.
Yes.
Mrs. Shakana.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Sidewoods.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Lippy.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke, personnel, student affairs, please.
Yes, I'd like to move items one through 53.
Second. Any questions or comments?
So, I have a comment, number 24, Mrs. Nye. Claudia Nye, this district will, not be the same without you. Not only was Mrs. Nye my teacher in high school, and I can tell you that she saved a lot of lives. When we got to college, I remember friends saying, "Remember when Miss Nye told us, if we're ever in this situation, do this," or "If someone ever tries to steal you, do this," or, and we were like, "She saved my life," you know? She taught a psychology class that just was, was real life, and taught you how to handle situations, and why people do things, and it was incredible. So thank you for saving my friends' lives, but also for being my mentor when I became a teacher. She was a great mentor, and now she's a good friend, so good luck in your retirement, and I was really shocked to see that on the agenda.
Can I say something?
Yep, go ahead.
Mrs. Nye. I've taught with Mrs. Nye for many years, and she truly is an incredible character and human being, and this district will truly miss her because she just had such a personality and rapport with kids that you don't find in every high school. So thank you, Claudia, for everything, and every time I think of you, I think of your recipes, and your cooking conversations, and just the smiles that you gave all of us, so thank you for everything.
I also wanted to say thank you to Claudia. Claudia was a person that, you asked her a question, she gave you the answer. She doesn't beat around the subject, and I think you're right, a lot of students learned and respected her, and cared enough, if they had an issue, they went to her, and they felt comfortable talking with her, so she definitely will be an asset that we want this to have. Good luck, Claudia, I hope you're gonna have a great retirement.
One more for Claudia. Yeah, so, you know, maybe a little bit different, but I know she is a fantastic teacher, but the other thing that she's known for, from some of my children's, children, men now, friends, is also just being a great mom. And, you know what, that's all, many of you out there also are great moms and great parents, and she was fantastic to so many students, and she probably would say, "I felt like a mom to Kate and others besides her students," and I know that, you know, one of my boys felt that way about her too, so Claudia, congratulations, have a great retirement.
Any other comments or questions? So I have a comment on 15. The district guidance counselor position, actually, the cut is down to the high school, is that correct?
So the cut, the staff members at Macicken, they'll be bumped in and then transferred probably next week or two weeks. Three weeks. So we're gonna riff, recommending that we riff employee 5192, who's a Macicken employee, but they will do a subsequent recommendation at the end of May to transfer a high school staff member in the same position group of high school to Macicken.
For that position?
For that position.
So that leads me to a question, if a staff member for any open position wants a lateral move, how do they ask for that?
They should probably speak to the principal.
Okay. And then what does the principal do? Can you give me the, like, how does that work?
Well, you speak to the principal, the principal will speak to Dr. Winow, Mr. Novak, or myself, depending on Mr. Hartman or what's left.
Okay.
I'll put it to the board committee and talk.
Hi, Grandma, I just want to make a statement, I was in shop right over the weekend, and I had a parent that approached me about the agenda, and about the employee IDs being on here, and what the parents said to me kind of hit home to me, because it makes sense. They said, "Why is it that the staff names are on the agenda for when they take a leave of absence, or when they're resigning or retiring, but in this case where people were riffs, they're not here?" And parents would have liked to know if it was their teacher, that or guidance counselor or whatever is being riffed. And I have to say, I didn't know what to say to her, because she's right, she made it very clear to me that it looks like we're not being transparent as a board, and that the board is trying to hide something. So I'm okay with tonight, because this is where we are, but I hope in future agendas, if we have people on for these items, I would like to see their name there, because I think that if we put it there to make sure everybody knows they're taking a leave, or that they're resigning, or whatever, I think it should be here, you know? We have to own up that we're letting them know and who they are.
On that, I think, I think it should be their decision, you know, when they get their letter, if they want their name printed, right?
Well, a lot of people felt that they didn't know they were even on there.
The people who are on there. Did they not get pink slip to meetings?
I don't know, I didn't have that discussion, but I agree, I think it's a public body, and if you want to be transparent, people's names should be on there, and if somebody contacts you and says, "I don't want my name on there," that's a whole nother thing, but I think we're not doing what we should be doing as a public body.
Have we always done it that way about?
No.
Yeah, we've had names on the riffs.
Yes, on the, everybody's.
When did that start?
I don't know when it started, that recall deal.
Well, yeah, last year it wasn't names.
I know, in certain circumstances, it would be, it would be appropriate not to have names, and I understand that, but...
It's interesting, because right before this meeting, Andy just said to me, "You might want to go and have your whole entire agenda just have ID numbers, like other districts do, and take off all the names." And I said, "Well, I guess we're gonna have to put that on a committee for discussion," right? Because it was just something that we were chatting about and saying, "Other districts do not put names on at all, they just have ID numbers." So it's an interesting thing, and I personally, I understand exactly what you're saying, but when someone writes a letter to the district for a leave of absence, you're requesting that they be, like, as the employee, "I'm asking your permission to have, you know, be paid for my leave of absence," so you know your name's going up. When you're a riff, and I have been both of these things in my own life, so I understand, I don't know that, you know, I...
Well, you're not firing them, you're letting them go for reduction in force, and in doing that, it tells the students and the parents that they're leaving. Like, it's not so much that you can prevent them from leaving us, but it gives them a heads up so that maybe they want to have an interaction with that teacher and say, "Look, you know, I'm sorry you're going, I'd just like to come back."
Yeah, we'll bring this to committee for sure, yeah. And Personnel Committee will discuss it. Go ahead, Ray.
I'm here when Andy said...
Ray and then Peter.
Yeah, I'm here when Andy, I think it's just about consistency.
That's right.
It's got to be numbers, if it's consistent, it just looks very different to you.
Yeah, I agree with Ray, I agree with your point on that, but I think sometimes it's the, where many people go, when they retire, and people are, things like that, there's different cases in your life, and when you're doing something because it's a necessary reason, it's not a personal decision, so we have a non-emotional decision, I mean, it is very emotional, however, the reasons that we're doing it are not emotional. So these, I would imagine these teachers and staff members and things like that should know their own ID numbers, so they recognize that, and I don't believe the sort of... They know, they know that they've been ripped before being on, or before we discuss that deal.
Well, they know they've been recommended. Once we be official, it's a nice meeting, we never want to say, this is what's going to happen, we just say this will be recommended.
Everyone on this list received a pink slip with a letter that...
So tomorrow, they will see, whoever gets voted on to be ripped, they will receive a notice tomorrow saying the board voted last night to... No, they receive the rice notice.
Well, it doesn't, it just says you'll be talked about, it doesn't, it doesn't state to them that we're talking, that we're letting them go, yeah, it's, for them, I guess, you're thinking, well, of course, they're assuming that that's the case.
So I was under the impression that everyone was getting a, like, pink slip, and...
How are you guys not, how are you not under the impression?
Point of order.
Yeah. And I remember saying, when I was a non-tenured staff member in West Milford, everybody that was non-tenured, and anybody that was the possibility of getting cut, all got pink slips. And, I mean, it was stressful, but at least there were a lot of us in the scene, you know, it was different. Now, I was told that only the people that are the possible definite cuts get the pink slips, but that didn't happen.
Well, no, that did happen. We did not deliver, we don't call pink slips in order, but they received a notice that they began tonight's agenda. Once they're voted on, and I approved, then tomorrow they will receive a letter saying that at the May second board event meeting, the board voted to a reduction in force in your position, so nothing's been, nothing's been voted on yet. You couldn't tell any staff member, "You've lost your job," and some of your tenure. So after that vote by the board tonight, we can't tell somebody they've lost their job.
In years past, I can tell you, we have always had to riff people up until maybe the last few years, you know, we've kind of, because of, because of retirements, that kind of stopped that. But what always went out is some, in some years, we ripped everybody that was possible to be ripped, and then you would bring them back one at a time. We all felt that that was a little proponent to do, because that we weren't going to let everyone go. So everybody got a riff notice before the meeting, and then it was voted on, and if we didn't, if we didn't, they weren't, if they weren't on that list, then they got a letter saying that they still got their year, or they got a letter stating that they were being let go. A rice notice to someone, I maybe, Andy can address this, really doesn't tell the employee more than, "You're on the agenda," or "You're going to be discussed," that's all they know. So they do feel up in the air, maybe there should have been some discussion, I don't know, with staff, let them know that these are the things that are going to happen, nothing's happened, it could change, but that's not our call.
So letters, after tonight's meeting, all the letters for Personnel will go out tomorrow.
How do they go out?
They go hard copy and via email, so we just, we have the retirement here, that one obviously will be approved, that will go out tomorrow morning via email and via hard copy, US code. But if number one is not voted on, or is voted no, then we couldn't, you know, we can't do it without a vote tonight, so this is the official vote tonight, we rehire Mr. Riff, it's all happening.
So this entire thing needs to go to Personnel, it absolutely needs improvements for next year. The first mistake was in the very first budget presentation, when we saw the board didn't have that prior, and if we had, I would have called Alex and said, whatever slide it was where the positions were listed, "Alex, you can't put that up there," but I didn't see it prior, so I didn't get to give my opinion, or my yelling, or whatever. So the following day, I know that staff members showed up to their buildings, and some principals said to them, "I'm really sorry." We're like, "What? Sorry? Yeah, your position was, you know..." So that can't happen again. Pink slips really should go out, that is not fair that they're not. Pink slip means, and we can call it whatever you want, but a rice notice doesn't do it. I call it a pink slip, I don't care what we want to call it in the future, it tells someone, "You're possibly losing your job because of the budget, or because of whatever's happening," and plan for your future, right? That's fair. I know we've talked about being fair as much as we possibly can, so this is new to me, and I didn't know that this was happening, and clearly you can see that I'm upset. So, Will?
I don't understand how you give a pink slip to somebody that hasn't been approved yet, we're the ones that usually get the votes. I don't know how you do that, how do you, how do you give a pink slip to somebody who hasn't been formally approved for that? Do you anticipate a pink slip? Is it a milder pink slip, like, is there a different version of a pink slip?
We knew that there would be cuts, we didn't approve it well.
Well, you know, you still have to go through the process of, "Excuse me."
Will you listen to you?
This is a board, this is a board meeting.
You are far from able to...
Point of order.
I have to ask you to leave, you will have a public comment at the end.
You're getting it, Tyra.
Yeah, you should, we'll just go to roll call. Everyone up here with that? Okay.
Mrs. Tinnell. I abstain on number 32, and yes, for the red. Mr. Sidewoods.
Yes.
Mr. Lippy.
Yes.
Mrs. Recana.
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mr. Grino.
So based on that discussion, no on 1 through 23, and abstaining on 32, yes to rest.
No on 1 to 23, abstaining on...
Abstaining on 32, and it's a yes, you may rest.
Mrs. Dwyer.
No on 1 to 23, and yes on everything else.
Mr. O'Brien.
No on 1 to 23, abstaining on 31.
Mrs. Romeo.
I abstain on 31, 32, 43, 47, yes on everything.
Education, Mrs. Lockwood.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 1 under Education.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing as non-literal call, please.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mr. Sidewoods.
Yes.
Mr. Grino.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Does this include the Disney trip that our administration is taking?
No. Okay, yes. Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Lippy.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mrs. Recana.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Okay. The next item is public comment. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who've asked to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided, give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the residing officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments, and members of the public are reminded that they're legally responsible and liable for their comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Can you hit the button so that it's red, please? Do you see red?
Yes.
Okay. I don't mean in general, I mean just on the mic.
Yes, yeah. Christina Duffy, 25, World Turnpike. My children attend Marshall Hill Elementary School, for such a time, say, the guy tribe that we just got tortured with was next level. So what I'm, what I'm saying... What I'm saying, I feel like, given what you just did, is kind of... I'm saying it for the record. So despite what you see from me over here, I don't like public speaking. But I read the Agenda yesterday, and I read it again today, and I was so compelled to at least say something. So your workforce reduction proposal in Section 11, to put it politely, is upsetting and disappointing. 22 positions is a tremendous number, and certainly more than I anticipated would be proposed. What's even more upsetting than the fact that 22 positions are being eliminated is the fact that a little under one-third of those positions, a total of seven, work with our kids with learning differences. So by my calculation, that's four on-court teachers, two special education teachers, and one member of the child study team. So that's one-third of the total workforce reduction number. That's staggering. And as the mother of a child in this district that benefits from special education, I am concerned about the impacts this proposal will have on my child and her peers. Since Marshall Hills are homeschool, I'd like to specifically address the reduction mentioned in Item 11 under Section 11, eliminating a special education teacher. As I understand the redistricting numbers, Marshall Hill will have approximately 100 new little faces walking through its doors come September. So I realize that it's a net 40 with the kids that are moving out and the ones that are moving in. But for the sake of this discussion, it's 100 new faces, unknown learners, right? That Marshall Hill has to get to know. Some of those kids are already going to be in a resource setting. So in my mind, that makes up... Now, I don't know the numbers, so maybe I'm wrong. But in my mind, makes up for the kids that are shifting out from Resource and going into other schools. So fine. But then Marshall Hill has to get to know all these other learners, right? Who very likely could be referred to Resource for optimized learning, right? Thus increasing class sizes. Now, your proposal, which I guess now in effect, right? Class sizes become even bigger. So increased class sizes will make it more challenging for every student in Resource to get a fair shake at learning and will definitely set the remaining teachers up to be spread way too thin. The objective of Resource work is to make learning accessible for every type of learner. To me, eliminating a special education teacher for a school that is receiving the largest influx of children, I believe, unless again, I'm wrong, from your redistricting efforts, seems to fly in the face of the objective of Resource leveling the playing field. You're taking opportunity away from our kids, and you're making learning less accessible. And I'll just say, even though it's an ID number, she's exceptional, really. And it'll be a huge loss. So I'll say this, as a taxpayer, as a mom, as a PTA member, I believe that you wouldn't subject yourself to Board of Education service if you didn't want better for our kids. You had the opportunity, and I guess you still do in other ways, right? To make things right for these kids. I wish you wouldn't have moved ahead with this, but we are where we are. I'd like to see you do better. I believe in you. I trust in you as a taxpayer. And I'm disappointed, for sure. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Somebody else? Oh, I thought she was coming out. Catherine, are you coming up? Yeah. But she can go first. You can go first.
Sure. I'm sorry, wait. Is there someone else that wanted to speak?
Yeah. Do you want to speak? So you go first.
She already spoke. So it's up to the 30 minutes. Done. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gough.
No problem. Catherine White... It has to be red. Okay. Catherine White Connors, 37, Heidi Drive. I was looking over our teachers who are being ripped right now. Who are... I don't know if you can answer this, but how many of them are 10-year teachers?
You can't really answer a question.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this is because I'm aware that there are teachers who have not been offered back their positions when they are opened back up again. That has cost school districts two-plus years of salaries that they have to reimburse when a teacher is ripped and they are not giving... They're not offered their job back. Who's going to keep track of this? Because we have to make sure if we are ripping 10-year teachers, somebody's keeping track of it because our teachers better be offered their jobs back if their position's open. Because that is the only right thing to do. Because otherwise, we're going to have bigger issues.
Thank you. Is there someone else that I would like to speak? Dr. Gough, it's you. Go ahead.
I apologize. This is a little bit of word vomit. I just... I miss things randomly. So again, first off, hello, everybody. First of all, thank you for the 20-year history lesson. I really appreciated that. I did actually pay attention and take in some notes myself because there are some things that I have seen myself growing up, you know, graduating high school in 2006. I saw those changes firsthand while I was in college in 2008. So this all can't be blamed, by the way, on the Highlands Act. I've heard this time and time again, my short time there on the board. So when I've gone back, I've looked through. I know what the Highlands Act is. However, I do find that the vacancy rate that we had that started in 2008 has significantly decreased. Houses that were surrounded by me that were either short sale before closed and now been bought up. But again, there's not that many free vacant properties that are left within West Milford. Because of COVID, people have moved into this town. I can't stress that enough. The population is not aging. I don't care what Dr. Baker says. It's changing, as I've said before. People were essentially forced out of their homes because, even though you say the average rate of a house is $240,000 in our town, I don't agree with that. Because of COVID, our houses have sold for double that. People were saying, I can make an extra $200,000 in my house. I wasn't going to move to Florida yet, but maybe I will. So I can't stress that enough, that I have seen younger and younger people coming in. People coming in from more of the condensed counties because of COVID. They wanted more space. And obviously, West Milford offers that more than the more congested counties. My own research has proved that declining enrollment isn't... Is simply not because we aren't having as many children. Again, I can think of multiple families that have more than two children, three, four, five, six children. So to blame my generation that aren't having as many children is simply wrong. Or blaming it because there aren't any new bills because of the Highlands Act. But because they're sending their children elsewhere. You talk about it yourself. We're all... I can tell you, as many parents, probably one in four families, are sending their children to PCTI, just based off of my own research. And also, speaking of the census. The census was done right before the COVID... Right before COVID hit. Remember I said... I remember someone knocking on my door in March of 2020. I'm curious to see what the next US Census will show us. The last census was done, obviously, before this little COVID lady flipped. It's not a bill like I projected. So yes, any of ours and things, I'm going to always be right. Even if you consider closing another school, I will guarantee, if there is some way I can put in a grievance of closing another school in this town, and I know you could choose Paradise Falls, which is absurd, I will gather as many residents as humanly possible and offering an estate monitor myself because they would somehow have to do a better job than what we're doing. Also, please, don't be so shortsighted about the grant writer. I guarantee you, you have residents that are more than willing to help meet that goal. You need to consider something as simple as fundraising. Think outside of the box of simply having a base sale. Being a part of the PTA myself, I have seen us do wonders with fundraising. So again, don't be so shortsighted and sell ourselves short because we're ready to come in blazing and try to do whatever we can to do this grant writing, even if that means having to fundraise to hire someone outside. So also, based off of what you said, Linda, please tell me, as a taxpayer, how I can help you. If you say, as a board, we cannot go to these meetings. We cannot speak to PCTI or their staff or the town or the county or the state, whatever it may be. Tell me what I can do. Send me an email. I will write it down on this form. Tell me what I can do. I have stood on Capitol Hill as a physical therapist. I have pleaded with them to pass Treatment Acts. It took 18 years, but I got it done. So tell me what I need to do. Instead of speaking hypothetically, tell me. Give me concrete information, and I will do the meeting.
Stephanie Barnmore, 46 inches ahead. Wasn't going to speak tonight, but just a couple of observations. One, we are a community. And the fact that there just seems to be so much animosity is horrible. Okay? Nobody here should be made to feel bad because they want to protect the staff that's here, the amazing staff that's here. Nor should people be mocked when they bring up things that other people have maybe voted on in the past. Going forward, this board needs to understand that for the 12 years that I've been helping the board meetings and for the 10 years that I've worked in this district, our administration and our board worked well with our staff. We were a community. Now, we have turned into the half-fielding McCoys. So if you want this district to be successful, there needs to be a little coming together. And I certainly hope that coming down the road, there'll be a little bit more of that. Like, people not getting notices at 4 o'clock in their email at the same time as a principal when they're going to be losing their job. Okay? We are a community. We all have to work together. You have to be cut. We understand that. Little disappointing that maybe we didn't look at, you know, a redundant IT position or a $37,000 webmaster position that no other district has. I mean, including PCTI, by the way. We don't spend $37,000 on our... On our webmaster. It's part of their job. And for clarification, anybody who wants to attend a PCTI meeting, they're all at 4:30. So none of them are at 9 o'clock. Maybe they were in the past, but I could tell you for a fact they're not now. And they actually are very sympathetic to the situation here. And I know have reached out to different administrators to talk about ways that they could help. So hopefully, the incoming administration will be willing to take up that offer for help and work with them to benefit our children and our staff and our community. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Since there's none, I'm motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Claire, could you please ring the executive session? And what we're going to do is we will all return and boot together. And then go back and do a second executive session. So the first one, you will see... The next one will be Personnel, and they will not be taking action. But the first one, right now, let's focus on that. We're going to do HIBs and negotiations. Claire's going to read it. We need a half hour.
So at 8:50, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, HIBs, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately 30 minutes. Action will be taken when we return.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor? Any opposed? I'll call the meeting back to order. Mrs. Lockwood, Education? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Roll call, Ms. Francisco? Sorry about that.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mr. Sidewitz?
Here.
Mrs. Riconna?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Marino?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. Lippie?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo?
Here. Okay, now, Education, Mrs. Lockwood.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 2 under Education. 2023 slash M12 as unsubstantiated. 2023 slash M13 as unsubstantiated.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing as non-literal copies?
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Lipp... Mr. Sidewitz?
Abstain.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Riconna?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes. I need a motion for adjournment.
Motion for second executive session for Personnel. Yes.
Okay. I need a motion for a second executive session for Personnel matters.
And we will not return.
And we will not return.
We will return, but you're not returning.
We will return, and action may be taken.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into a second executive session for approximately...
30 minutes.
30 minutes. And we will return due to action...
Maybe to be taken.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No problem.
Welcome back. Roll call, Barbara? Mr. Lippie?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Marino is absent. Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo is absent.